Agenda.
What?
You're making bucks on the meeting, is that what's happening?
Yeah, I'm saying if it's twenty minutes, I will buy drinks.
It'll take flame in twenty minutes just to say hello and goodbye.
Well.
Did you say if it's less than twenty minutes, you're buying drinks?
If it is twenty minutes or less, I will buy drinks.
Okay. But if it's longer than twenty, you know, that would be disincentive.
Oh, yes.
I'll buy the round if you can do it.
Alright, thirty it is. I think the meeting just got longer.
I think, I think thirty's a good, uh...
Probably.
Good window.
I mean, I can stretch the consent agenda reading out there, you know, it's... That, yes, is to make sure that it gets done, but not to waste everyone's time.
Yeah, it has to.
Welcome to the April third City of Shakopee City Council Meeting. Uh, Kim, would you please do the role?
Yes. Uh, Counselor Punt?
Here.
Counselor Lehman?
Here.
Counselor Clay?
Here.
Counselor Whiting?
Here.
Mayor Tapke?
Here. Thank you. Well, everybody, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, item number three, presentation of service plaques. You wanna do this, or... Do you wanna introduce it?
I can certainly do this. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, as we have people who retire or otherwise leave the advisory boards and commissions of the city, it is traditional to present them with a token of the city's appreciation. Tonight, we have Rick Valencourt. Rick was on the Historic Preservation Advisory Commission.
I'm Rick, for all the work.
My pleasure. Thank you very, very much. I appreciate it.
Great.
Thank you.
Item number four, approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Mark?
Mr. Mayor, there is a letter on the table tonight, which is a request for a letter of support for regional transit capital request from the state legislature. We'd propose to add that as eleven F two.
Thank you. Any other additions or corrections? Alright, entertaining motion. Counselor Whiting?
I'll move, uh, take, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented and waive the reading.
Uh, we just need approval of the agenda, the regular agenda.
I'll approve the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
Second.
Counselor Clay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Alright, consent agenda now, item number five.
Try it again.
You should.
I'll move the consent agenda as presented and waive the reading.
Uh, do we have a second for that?
Alright, I'll try it again. I'll, I'll withdraw my first motion and, uh...
Okay.
Uh, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the reading.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Counselor Clay, any discussion? Counselor Lehman?
Normally, we get to take things off concept if we wish to discuss them. And to break the thirty-one minutes, let me find a couple to take off here.
Oh, yeah, you're gonna be that guy.
I just, I can't find any.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait.
I'm sorry, we had to read it first. Um, so what do I do now? We need a lawyer.
Um, you get a do-over after we get done with this. Why don't I read it, then you decide if you wanna vote?
Alright, we'll do that. Thanks, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Five B one authorizes the city to enter into a cleaning contract with Plymouth Ridge Inc. doing businesses, cover all cleaning concepts until December thirty-first, two thousand twelve, for seasonal park restroom cleanings. Five B two awards a contract to Egan Company for repair and replacement of a traffic signal cabinet at Verling Drive and Heather Street at a quoted cost of twenty-one thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars. Five B three authorizes a recycling program agreement between the City of Shakopee and Scott County for April twenty-eighth, two thousand twelve, city cleanup date. Five C one grants a provisional appointment for the position of police records technician to Amberly Cortez effective April fourth, two thousand twelve, at the hourly rate of eleven dollars, excuse me, eighteen dollars and eleven cents. Five C two allocates a two thousand and eleven worker comp commission check totaling five thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars to the Employment, Employee Wellness Committee for use in promoting employee wellness programs. Five F one authorizes bills and pass-throughs to be paid in an amount totaling eight hundred and fourteen thousand thirty-five dollars seventy-one cents. Five F two approves the minutes of the March sixth, thirteenth, twentieth, and twenty-seventh, two thousand twelve, city council meetings. Five F three sets an alcohol violations compliance hearing for Tuesday, May first, two thousand twelve, at seven PM to review the actions of Asian Han Inc. and Chipotle Mexican Grill of Colorado LLC. Five F four adopts a resolution combining the polling places of precinct thirteen with precinct eleven and precinct twelve B with precinct twelve A. Five F five authorize a staff to renew the Microsoft license agreement through S H I for an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand thirty dollars to come from the IT fund. And finally, five F six accepts with regret the resignation of Carol Schultz, former position as Civil Service Commissioner.
Thank you very much, sir. We will vote again. Any additional discussion on the items? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. I have to put a big star in my agenda to remember to have that read before I ask for the vote. Sorry about that. Um, item number six, recognition of involved citizens by city council. Anyone out there have anything you'd like to talk about? Connie? Alright.
Oh, come on.
Um, item number seven, no public hearings this evening, um, no business removed from consent agenda. Do we need to do anything with nine and ten? Item number eleven B one, um, public works.
Mr. Mayor, if we could suggest moving ahead on that, as the county representative is not yet here.
Okay, we will, uh, come back to that with item eleven D one. Um, approving plans and specs for Riverside Fields Park and authorization to advertise for bidding.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm bringing forward you tonight the approval of the plans and specifications to go out and to go out for bid for the construction of the Riverside Fields Park located off of Crestings Boulevard. Last year, um, on May third, the city council approved a preliminary design for this park. We did the park planning process along with the Green Meadows Park. Um, so this was the plan that was approved by the city council last year. Um, this is a future section over here, so phase two, this park is gonna be built in phases. Phase one was to put in the playground last year, which has been installed in this area. And phase two is to construct the park that we currently own, or the land that we currently own, which is this area here, and then a future phase, if we so choose to. Um, if we take land from a development over here, then we would put in a future phase, but that would be up for discussion at the time that any development would come into the west. So, um, currently, the plan is, this year, is to complete this side with trails, um, a paved hockey rink with a basketball court in the hockey rink, a free skate area. Two tennis courts was what was decided at that point. Um, a twenty-stall parking lot, we'd only build half of it at this time and build the other half at a future stage if needed. And then to put in a same volleyball court. And then we are going ahead with, um, applying for the outdoor recreation grant for the shelter that's at this park, which would be in this location. So, the shelter would not be built with this phase two construction because we may not know the grant funding amount until the end of this year, which means it'd be on the plans for next year. This year, the park staff is going to be building the shelter at Green Meadows Park. So, in your packet, we put together, um, the cover sheet and the plan that was put together by StanTech. Um, this is the cover sheet to the plans and specifications. And then the plan, we did a, a little bit of changing of location of items, but we didn't change any items. For instance, we just changed the orientation of the free skate area to allow for better drainage and to better access for our park staff. Um, the trails have been, uh, I guess beefed up a little bit for our park department to be able to drive the truck to flood the rinks on. Um, we did have our park staff heavily involved with the, the plans and specification, as well as one of our engineers. So, we've gone through all of these to make sure that we have, um, made this accessible for our public works department to get in to maintain, to flood the rink, um, with our heavy trucks and, and that sort of thing. Um, so we've shifted the hockey rink down a little bit. We've had to, um, work with the gas line here. Um, we have to stay outside of that easement, and we have a letter from the gas company of how many feet we have to be off of it. Uh, we can cross it perpendicularly, but we can't be right over top of it. So, you'll see our trail is just to the west of that. But it, all in general, the plan is still the same. So, bringing it forward to tonight, we have budgeted in our CIP six hundred and forty thousand dollars to complete this park. Um, twenty-four thousand of that is for the design services, to do the final plans and specs and all the bidding documents. And then, uh, we did get an estimate from StanTech currently of, if we construct it as council approved it, with all of the amenities that's on the plan that was in front of you, um, it would be five hundred and ninety-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars, going back, um, just a step. Twenty-four thousand is our design services, which brings us to an amended amount that we have in our CIP of six hundred and sixteen thousand. If we put a, a ten percent contingency in there, our budget that we would like to stay under for construction is five hundred and fifty-four thousand. So, our estimate currently from the approved plan that was brought forward is over budget. However, uh, one item that we can do, and only to have one, um, item in our bid plan instead of multiple like we did with the last park, is to put in, um, a deduct alternate to not pave that hockey rink, and we can move the basketball court to the, um, tennis courts. It's not common. It has been done before though in other communities, but like I said, it's not common because it's gonna take space away from that tennis court, but we are still paving the tennis court, so it would allow for that. That is the one item that, um, staff is suggesting we do to try to get under budget. If we do that, our deduct would be forty-eight thousand, which would put it under budget by five thousand, um, or a little over five thousand dollars. This would still allow all the amenities to be there for the neighborhood, um, not taking anything away, just making that hockey rink a non-paved hockey rink, but they would sell the basketball course, court elsewhere. Our overall park reserve, it does have a healthy amount in it at this time. Um, we do hope for more development to come in, as you've seen other developments come forward you through our planning department and, and, um, other discussions, we will be getting further park dedication fees. However, the ones that are planned for this year is to construct the picnic warming shelter at Green Meadows, this park, and then possibly lighting of two fields. Um, we don't know a location yet. That's something the park board is working on with our associations, if that's really the desired need to go forward, which you'll see at a later date. Um, so with that, I'll take any questions, but we're asking council to offer resolution seventy-one eighty-two, um, approving the plans and specifications for Riverside Fields Park and authorizing the advertisement for bid, um, and then authorize the bid opening to be on May twenty-second at one PM at City Hall.
Counselor Lehman?
The first one is just a comment on the future potential site. And where they show the future forty-stall parking, I'm wondering if, uh, if the athletic future, future athletic fields, would we wanna add a sidewalk from that parking lot over that channel to them fields, separate from the one that's in the other parking lot? It's just something to think about for the next phase, I guess.
Yep, we can think of that. Um, I know when we had worked on this, we tried to cross the, the, all the channel as least as possible, so the one crossing was from our existing trail, but we can definitely keep that in mind.
I've got a feeling people are gonna go from the parking lot straight through the channel.
Yep, we can look at that.
That and the, I like the idea of having the bid alternates in there to see where we stand. And then, the CIP does not include the construction of the building, and we don't know what the grant is, but is that CIP separate from this project, or is it part of the project?
No, it will be separate from this project.
And is it identified separately in the CIP?
It has not been as of today, um, but as we rework the CIP each year, um, I do have it in there to bring forward when we review it for this next budget cycle.
Okay, so when the original CIP was put together for this park, was it included in that total amount?
It was, yes and no. Um, we did have more included, however, the council chose at last year when we applied for the grant for the Green Meadows Park, that if we got the grant or the additional funds that would meet our half, would be taken from this project. Um, so, we did have an amount budgeted for a building, but that has been moved now to do the building at the Green Meadows Park.
So, if we don't get the grant and the bids come in like the estimate, and then we build the building, will be hundred and seventy over budget.
Correct. Yeah, I would bring the building back to you. I'm gonna bring it forward to you when we do our CIP with budget, um, first and foremost. And then, if we don't get the grant, or if we get a smaller portion as we did this year, I would bring that back to you anyway, to decide whether we wanna move forward at that point to do it.
Okay. Alright, so we really gotta see how the bid climate is.
Right.
Counselor Clay?
How much water is there typically running through this Pearl Lake Spring Lake outlet channel?
Um, depends on the season. Um, it's got a regular amount of water in it. Right now, it's not very high, but last year during our high water, when we flooded out, this whole area was underwater. Um, it doesn't come up into the park. We've built that up enough that it hasn't flooded into our current land. Um, but the elevation of this whole parcel to the west is lo, too low right now. We're entirely floods. And maybe Mr. Leek can speak to it a little bit more. When the develop, development comes in, that whole land will have to be changed.
I'm also wondering...
Bruce, just briefly, when we had a previous preliminary plat for that property, one of the things that would have happened is, as, um, Ms. Polly indicated, that the site would have been, uh, built up, and in fact, we were talking about some realignment and rededication of easements for that channel that would have taken care of what are the current flooding issues. So, my expectation is, when someone comes in in the future with a plat proposal, we'd be reviewing for those kinds of site changes as well.
Was that it? Okay. Um, Jamie, so are we gonna include, um, in what we're doing as a bid alternate here? If that does not make it into this, um, estimate, if it is too high, are we gonna add, um, putting concrete down at, or asphalt down as part of the future phase? To get it done eventually and put the basketball court in the hockey rink when the next phase comes through? Or are we planning on leaving it in the tennis court forever?
That would be up for discussion. At this point, it would be planned to, to stay at, in the tennis court, unless we find that that combination just really does not work for that neighborhood, but that would be a future discussion.
Okay. Anything else? Alright, how would you like to proceed? Counselor Clay?
Offer resolution seventy-one eighty-two approving plans and specifications and ordering an advertisement for bids for Riverside Fields Park Construction Project Number PR twenty-twelve dash one.
I'll second that.
Second, any discussion? Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie. Alright, back to item, uh, number eleven B one. Bruce?
I'll do the quick interject, please.
Okay.
Um, we have with us tonight Lisa Freeze, Transportation Manager, and Craig Jemson, who's the project manager of the Trunk Highway one sixty-nine and County Road sixty-nine interchange project. They would like to, uh, give us an update on where the progress is of the project and the schedule, future schedule. They were a little bit late because they had a neighborhood meeting on this project prior to this meeting, so they can update the council on that. And I will pass out.
Thank you, sir. Lisa, how are you doing?
Good evening, mayor, and members of the council. I'm happy to be here tonight to give you a brief update on this project that we've been working on collaboratively with the city and also the Department of Transportation. We anticipate, uh, shortly that a few things will be happening, um, with this project, uh, and just wanted to make sure that the council, uh, had an opportunity to know where the project's at in our schedule and, uh, to be able to ask questions, um, if you have any on the project. As you may recall, back in two thousand and ten, we started work on preliminary design on this project, and we had partnership funding from Mendat, the city, and then the county. We worked through, um, in the early part of that process, uh, and had an open house where we brought five different concepts to the public to look at. They included an overpass at this location, and diamond interchange, a partial interchange, a folded diamond interchange, and then the southeast loop. Shortly after we had that initial open house, uh, we were very fortunate to find out that we received safety money from Mendat to actually construct this interchange. When we had started on that process, um, to develop, uh, a concept for it, we didn't anticipate having funding for the project quite so soon. That funding that we received was twelve point two million dollars from Mendat. The county has a safety legacy fund, uh, that is, uh, um, from our county wheelage tax that's imposed on the residents, uh, on an annual basis with their tab fees. And that funding, uh, that goes into that pot of money is being used to match the, the local or the county portion of that project. So, what that did is that put us into, um, the mode of needing to, to actually design a project rather than getting a, a layout on the shelf to seek funding. Um, so then, we worked through a number of issues regarding the interchange design and came back, uh, late, um, late summer, um, with a second open house last year, of which we presented the, the alternative that you see on the screen here before you, which was the preferred alternative based on all of the technical and, um, um, staff input that we received from the various agencies that participated in our advisory committee. This, uh, layout has a, what we would call a traditional diamond on the north side of one sixty-nine to provide the on and off ramps, uh, to the roadway. And then, on the south side, uh, we have what we call a, a loop, a folded diamond, um, a half-folded diamond, uh, folded towards the east. And, uh, the, uh, the reason that this alternative works so well is because our heavy movement, um, at this intersection is predominantly northbound, um, to actually what I would call northbound County Road sixty-nine in the AM. And then, in the PM, it's the reverse. It's southbound sixty-nine and then on to southbound one sixty-nine. And because of this loop, we're able to accommodate, uh, that heavy movement by a right turn rather than it having to cross over and make a left turn on to County Road sixty-nine. So, it facilitates that heavy movement, uh, that we currently have and we anticipate will continue to have as the river crossing, um, grows in importance uh, for this, uh, part of the, uh, county. Right now, uh, there are a couple of other projects that, uh, long-term will probably complement this interchange. The one showing on green, uh, actually closes the NSP, um, um, facility that they have, uh, that has a direct access off of one sixty-nine. That is being done as a separate project in coordination with township to extend that Buena Vista Drive, uh, down to that location and redirect the NSP access. Another project that the city has on their radar and would like to complete is the Verling, um, drive, uh, connection to one sixty-nine, but that is not a part of this project, um, that the county is moving forward with at this time. Right now, where we are in the process is that we have completed, uh, an environmental assessment worksheet, which looks at environmental impacts of this interchange, and that is out for public review. That review period ends April eighteenth. And at that point, Mendat, who's the, um, R G U or the, um, I forget what R G U means.
Responsible Government Unit.
Responsible Government Unit. Thank you, Michael. I knew you would help me. Um, once they complete reviewing those comments, then they will post in the, in the environmental quality boards, monitor, uh, their findings of fact on that. Uh, this was a voluntary... boards monitor their findings of fact on that. This was a voluntary environmental assessment worksheet. Typically, on projects of this nature, given the conditions in this area, you wouldn't normally even go through the environmental assessment worksheet process. But the county opted to do that in order to make sure that all issues were clear, brought out before everybody, before we proceeded with construction. Tonight, we did hold a neighborhood meeting with affected residents in this townhome development in this area here. After doing our noise analysis, which is a requirement under the new state noise policy, it was determined that this could meet the criteria necessary for the consideration of a noise wall. Under the new policy, which is a little different from the old policy, the neighbors themselves actually get to vote on whether or not that noise wall gets placed. So we held a meeting tonight with benefiting property owners. And it was kind of lightly attended. We've already received a number of those votes back from that neighborhood. The noise wall that is being proposed essentially, and I'm just gonna draw on this because it doesn't show up very well on this drawing, goes in this location, ends about where I dropped off with the marker on the drawing here. And that noise wall would go in with the project. It will be part of the Mendat-Trunk Highway system. They will maintain that noise wall upon the completion of the project by the county. In terms of next steps, once we complete the environmental assessment review, then the next thing that we need to get signed off on is what they call a staff-approved layout with the Department of Transportation. Right now, this layout is making its way through the different functional areas at Mendat, who review and approve that type of layout. Once that layout's approved, then we'll proceed into final design on this project. With an anticipated project letting sometime late in 2013, part of the requirement of our funding is that we let the project before December 31st, 2013. So what we anticipate doing is letting the project probably in the fall, likely in September. And then the contractor, once we award that contract, will begin construction. We don't anticipate a lot of construction during the winter, but we anticipate it will be completed by the end of the construction season in 2014. So depending on how the contractor chooses to do the work, there may be some construction that they're able to complete over the winter months that they choose to do. Right now, that's the intended schedule with the project. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you have regarding this project.
Council Lemon?
Well, I've actually got a bunch of questions, but they're pretty basic. And I'm not sure if either you or Bruce or Mr. Leach can answer them. But does the bridge over 169 have pedestrian access crossing?
It will have pedestrian accommodations on it.
Okay. And then the second question was the access on 69, south of 169 to Ron's Mechanical is closing?
That is correct.
And then across the street to access that parcel, that one's remaining open?
I'm not sure which one you're referring to.
Be directly across the street.
Are you speaking in this area, Councilmember Lemon?
Straight across from Ron's Mechanical's driveway. Right there.
That will be closed as well.
Okay. Because one's showing up closed and the other one's not on the map here.
Is that true?
I think we assume that it'll be closed. The reason for the access is it serves the Met Council line that goes through there.
Okay.
So it's a maintenance line.
And then, and this might be a question for staff, but can we get an idea of how we access these properties? I would assume, once Verling is connected from 269, that that would access the property to the south on that intersection, north of 169, south of Verling.
You're looking at the northeast quadrant?
Yep.
Those parcel?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Thought that would, yeah, those parcel would get access from Verling.
And the southeast quadrant, that's accessed by, well, it'd have to be 69, south of 169, because that's really the only place to access it.
Currently, the access for this particular, these particular properties, today, most of those property owners come out to County Road 15 to get on to the Trunk Highway system if that's where their destination is. We are aware that there is a couple of backdoors that some of the folks in the neighborhood take through the shopping center. But their public access today will be unaffected by this project. And long-term, as I mentioned, once that Verling connection's made, we'll have direct access to 169 without taking the back roadway. Just maybe to kind of help everyone with the accesses, in this project, it's pretty simple. There are not a lot of changes made to access, other than, rather than going through the signal, people will be going through the ramp configurations to get on to 169. Up to the north, where the Township Road and Buena Vista connects in, that's in the approximate location where Verling Drive will connect when that roadway is connected. And that access will not change as a part of this project. To the south, you are correct, in that Ron's Mechanical, the access there was really a temporary access that was provided to them. They will be redirected to the local Township Road as a part of this project. We're already working with them. They have a development proposal in which they've come into the county for approval to make an addition or do some changes to their facility. And that activity is already in process. In terms of this access, Craig Jensen is correct. That is where the Met Council currently accesses their maintenance of their facility. They have a couple of facilities that they need to get access to. We would anticipate that when this area develops and a local road system is put in place, then we will be able to probably remove that access and provide that through the local street system. But until that time, one of the requirements of Mendat's permit that they have, and this is all in Mendat right away, is that that access be maintained until some other alternate access is provided. The Township Road and the field access down in this location, at least under our current configuration of the project, and we're still in preliminary design, we anticipate no changes at that area. We've looked at it, some concerns that the township has. But at this point, we've been able to work through them. We might make a very small modification to how that roadway connects with County Road 69. But what we would prefer to do, rather than make large changes in this area, we would like to work with the city as this area moves into the city and figure out what the city's street configuration that will connect with County Road 69 is, and make those changes further down the corridor in conjunction with that.
I would like to put just a bigger map to answer some of Matt's questions. But we talked about the connection to Verling at a previous council meeting of a route of local, you know, a local route of regional significance. There was some bonding money, but we were a little bit premature. Mendat wasn't ready to get rid of some land there. This parcel in here is excess right away. Been in contact with Mendat. We'll have to set up some meetings and how that process is gonna take place in the future. But there probably, it might be another bonding bill, might be another opportunity coming up in 2013 that we'd be able to make this connection or 2014. So that's what we're gonna be trying to do as staff, is to make this connection in here. The other thing that Lisa kind of alluded to, but at one time, we had a development with the frontage road coming along here and the, below the bluff line coming back. And that would happen in future developments. We've talked to the county. And also the extension of 17th Avenue up in the high area to County Road 69. So those are some of the connecting roads that would happen with further development.
One last question, Mayor.
Yes.
Where Old Brickyard Road meets up with 69 on the very bottom south of this map, would that, would we have maybe possibly an intersection there? And then that would be the frontage road looping down through any future development on a southeast corner?
Right in here, Matt?
Yep.
We've looked at that. There's quite a bit of grade change-
Okay.
-up in here. So it's a matter of what can be, what, where the access point can be granted-
Yep.
-for good spacing, and where it can actually serve some property. So that's a development issue that will happen someday, working with the county and working with the developer.
Does that location meet the spacing requirements? And I don't know what's to the, I don't know what's to the south of that.
We have looked at this. I know Craig has been involved. We have looked at that. There's some opportunity.
Yeah, the challenge will be the placement of what goes on up the bluff and what happens in this area. The spacing guidelines that the county has would have that first access point a little south of where the existing access is. And we've, we even looked as a part of this process about how you could redirect this access in this area down to that new location. But we decided that it's probably best to wait until this area comes in with more of a concept about what type of development will go in. Otherwise, we may end up having some work that, that ends up being what we call throwaway work. And that's something that we don't necessarily want to do. The thing about this is that this is a very low-density housing development with very few trips coming in and out of it. So as it's currently configured, and the volumes that we have, which are pretty low on County Road 69, its location doesn't present any kind of challenges at this time. But it's certainly something as we move forward, we want to work with, in most, likely it would be the city here if this moves forward, because under the county's zoning, which is under control right now, it's pretty much gonna be what it is. And there's not much opportunity for additional development until it has urban services and is under the city's authority.
My main point is to say, we have been doing some work in this area, looking at those issues. So, but they're not quite ready until development. We have been doing some pre-planning.
So Lisa, all the funding is secure for this interchange?
Based on our cost estimate that we have right now, the interchange itself is, is pretty much fully funded. We don't anticipate having significant issues. That includes the construction, the anticipated construction approval and construction of the noise wall. There are some additional access closures that the department is considering and pursuing. The Department of Transportation in separate projects further down the corridor to set the stage for eventually the, an interchange at Trunk Highway 41 and County Road 78 and 169. But the timing of those hasn't been established yet, and the extent of those, we are not aware of yet.
Alright. Thank you. Any other questions? Alright, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Alright, I believe now we're at item 11F1. Mr. McNeil?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The goal-setting session for staff and for council last week, there was a recommendation by the facilitator, so here, to set up what he termed the study sessions on a regular basis. We have had workshops, informal meetings regularly before, but usually on a as-needed basis. So we wanted to follow up with you tonight to find out whether that was something that you wanted to discuss. There would be several questions. First and foremost, obviously, is this something that you see a need for? The question following that, assuming that it is yes, is how would you want to schedule these? Would you want to do, continue as, an as-needed basis? Would you want to schedule them regularly? And if so, when? So we're opening this up for discussion. First, just the concept. Is this something that you want to see happen?
Council Whiting?
Well, I've talked about it a couple of times. I think it's important to get some information sometimes on different issues. I know we have a few that come to mind that may lend itself well to having a discussion before we have a formal meeting.
Council Punt?
Yeah, I agree with the idea as a concept, that we would carve out some specific time to have those kind of conversations in a format where we're not making decisions, so.
So basically, just to have a little more informal discussion about things?
Yep.
Okay. Council Lemon?
It's not a bad idea. I guess what I would like to see is, as these items that we want to have a discussion on, brainstorming or whatever, come up, that they be put on a list somehow, so that we know, so we don't end up getting there and scheduling a two-hour time slot and having 18 issues to discuss. You know?
I agree.
And then I'd like to set up the timing based on, you know, what the load is. I mean, if there's nothing that comes up for a month, then there's really no reason to have it. If there's four or five items that happen to be brought up by various members or staff or whatever and get put on this list, and it's now time to put together a time to discuss them items.
What, what is it, this kind of, what do these meetings look like to you? I mean, when, how often do they happen? When do they happen? Where do they happen? That kind of thing?
I think how often is based on, on what's on the list. If there's nothing on the list, it probably wouldn't happen very often. If there's a lot on the list, it'd probably happen more often.
Assume there are enough things on the list to talk about on a regular basis.
Okay.
What's that look like, then?
Every other month, maybe?
Okay. When?
Well, it'd have to be a Tuesday that we're not meeting. I would assume.
Council Whiting?
Could it be an hour before our regular meeting?
That's tough.
Put the timeline limit on it, Ben.
Why is that tough? Council Clay?
I don't get to eat first.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, me neither.
I, I think we could work into the, our, a slight dinner allowance of pizza for our lunch meetings if we needed to.
I can get that at home.
Basically, I gotta shut my shop down way early, or I'm gonna be sitting through a regular council meeting, if we do it before a council meeting, in greasy mechanic suit. And that's probably not-
I, I understand staff doesn't enjoy waiting around from 4:30 or 5 o'clock till 7:00. But, you know, I'm, everybody knows I'm all in favor of having more meetings. I would, I would hope that there would not be more than once a month and as needed.
Okay. Council Punt?
I think that any way we could find to incorporate it into a council meeting would be maybe a way to try it out. It wouldn't necessarily have to be before the meeting. I mean, for example, our agenda this evening was sort of light. So if we could manage agenda items in such a way that one of the council meetings per month could have an allotment of time where we have the workshop or study session discussion, that, that would probably be ideal. We wouldn't be adding in another calendar item.
We could all go to Arnie's and then really open up the discussion.
There you go.
I would remind you that these are, they're still public meetings. We still, I mean, all seriousness.
I got a camera on my phone.
They do need to be posted. We will be taking minutes, those sorts of things, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think they should be held here, just to make it easier on staff, not having to go set up somewhere else.
Yeah, I agree. Council Punt?
And then it seems like if an item of discussion or an item of interest was larger than what could be accommodated there, then that's when we do what we have been doing and identify a different day and a different time to have a longer session, perhaps. It feels like we just need to get going on it and give it a try.
Right. So you're saying, kind of what we, I had talked about earlier, and having one meeting be a business meeting and try and front-load as much as we can at the beginning of the month, and get through, which would mean putting, in my opinion, more things on consent agenda to get the business part done. And then the second meeting be a lot more strategic planning kinds of things, where, so we don't have to have an extra meeting. What does everybody think about that?
I think we should try.
Is it strategic planning, like comp plan? Is it strategic planning, like comp plan work, or is it throwing ideas out there for discussion?
Uh, it would be, from my perspective, I would think it would be informally structured meetings, that we have something to get done, that we have one, maybe two, things that need to be accomplished at that meeting, such as, from our goal-setting, economic development was a big part of what we talked about, and there are a couple of things that we need to get moving on economic development and give direction to staff, so we know exactly what's going on, and everybody knows exactly what's getting, going on, and using those meetings to get those items accomplished. And so we can invite Economic Development Advisory Committee and other people to those meetings, so we're not having an additional meeting, but we're accomplishing one or two goals for each meeting and start ticking things off the list that we talked about during the goal-setting session.
We're also going to need, if we, if we do that, need to have discussions on increasing the levy to cover the costs for that.
Or what we do.
Yeah, the levy question is probably a, a topic for a whole workshop session in and of itself.
Absolutely.
Well, this document says it's informal. We're talking about ideas, making no decisions. Now we're specific items with decisions being made, so.
Well, that's what we're having a discussion about today, is what we want this to look like. So we, we can choose that. Council Wyden?
I would think we would want to have it as specific items, maybe one, maybe two, maybe just one, if it's a big one. Obviously, the one with the levy question, it should be first. I don't think decisions need to be made at these meetings, but they can be brought back, you know, after having that, you know, discussion in an open meeting workshop. Then we can have the discussion with the motions and the formal part of it at the regular meeting.
So let me understand, why wouldn't we make decisions at these meetings? I mean, we don't always have to.
By nature of a workshop, you, you discuss items and you can come to a consensus, but you don't actually make the formal decisions until you sit as the council in regular session.
Okay. So like, at the goal-setting, we still made decisions and, the goal-setting portion was the informal part where we put together ideas, but before that, we had still done actual city business. And so we can still make decisions if we want to at that time, or?
Actually, we didn't do any actual city business.
We did one official item.
There was one official action that you took at that meeting, and of course, that was recorded, and we took a formal motion and, and a vote on that.
Okay.
What I'm hearing, the discussion going on tonight, is that if you're going to be looking at bigger picture or less formal ways of looking at this, you could probably reach a consensus and then direct staff to bring that back in a formal follow-up, same way we did the goal-setting over two nights. There'll be a document which will come before you in a couple of weeks that will be proposed for adoption at that point. At that point, you will take a formal, you'll endorse it formally. And so I think that's the difference between the workshop or the, the study session sort of concept in a regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay. What do you think should happen, Mark?
Um, I think there's an opportunity that, certainly with the agenda items that we've had recently, to perhaps use the regular first and third Tuesdays more fully. If the direction from you is to have as much stuff loaded on the, the first Tuesday of the month, we'll do that. Just keep in mind that we will always have probably some other things which do need to be addressed at the third meeting, just because we can't wait 30 days for a lot of the business to take place. But we can do that, and I'm, from a staff standpoint, I think we'd probably rather have that meeting scheduled on a, in conjunction with the regularly scheduled being, just, you know, out of respect to the, everyone's schedules on it. So we can do that. You should probably be thinking about, you know, the format. How formal do you want to do it? I mean, in joking, we're talking about having it off-site, but I think certainly what, what I'm hearing is that you want to have it here. Traditionally, we've had all of our meetings televised. Good or bad, that's what we've done. Is that something that you would continue with an informal workshop setting?
Council Lemon?
If we're going to discuss raising the tax levy and economic development and spending people's money, they should be able to, to see it.
I agree.
Council Clay? Thoughts?
Thoughts in general about that specific thing?
About the, I, I don't, I wouldn't dare give you that broad.
Um, I, I don't care if it's televised or not.
Okay.
Yeah, it seems fine.
Okay.
And again, just going back to the earlier conversation, if there is going to be formal action where you raise taxes or you impact people, that really does need to be on an agenda, just in the interest of total transparency, so that people have notice of this upcoming, and if they're interested, they can tune in, or they can come down here to the council meeting. So that's probably the, the reason why you'd want to shy away from taking regular or taking official action at a, at a study session.
Okay. Mr. Leek, what do you think?
Um, I think whatever the council wishes to do is perfectly appropriate.
Oh, come on. No, isn't this something that will, from a staff's perspective, be able to work? What do you?
Well, my questions about it really have to do with what's on the mind of the council members in terms of topic, of, in terms of topics for these work sessions. And, and to some extent, that will color what my view of trying to do it in a regular meeting as opposed to a work session is. One thing you have to remember about that second meeting is that our planning commission meets two days after you do on your first meeting. So if there are recommendations coming forward, so that we don't cause major issues with development timeframes for projects that are moving through, we'll have regular business at second council meetings of the month quite often.
Absolutely.
So.
Mr. Mayor, the other thing, in order to make the best use of your time in a study session, we should probably at least nail down what the subject items are going to be. And I think that was the consensus that I heard, whether it's one item or five items or whatever. But typically, we try to provide you with advanced information, so you get a chance to look at it and comment on it. If there's something that someone would want to have researched, we'd certainly do that. But that might also be something that would lend to some success on this if we got an opportunity really to provide you with the background information. If, on the other hand, it's going to be a brainstorming session, then we just identify it as such and just don't expect that, you know, there'll be a lot of support information in advance.
Okay. Council Punt?
From a topic perspective, it seems appropriate that the strategy meetings that we had would really be driving the topics, and, you know, we talked more broadly there, but that we would be able to take that time to, you know, drill into those topics in more detail and in the areas where staff direction or decisions ultimately need to be made. So that just seems logical to me, based on us spending so much time determining the priorities in those sessions.
So you're saying those four, five main topics from our goal-setting, right?
That, that seems where the topics would be derived from.
I agree. Ms. Wilson, do you have something to say over there?
I was just gonna say, it's possible it might be as simple as if you're gonna do this kind of on a monthly basis at the third Tuesday of the month. When you wrap up one third Tuesday or second meeting of the month, we spend 10 minutes talking about, okay, what does the council want to tackle next? And that gives staff at least four weeks' notice, sometimes five, to prepare that. And just getting into that routine of spending five minutes or 10 minutes at the end of each session, talking about what you want to tackle next.
Yeah, I think that's great. How do you, this all sound okay?
Yeah, I guess one of my concerns, and I think Mr. McNeil addressed it, is we have a lot of business, such as hiring and things, that depend on council action. So as long as there's the expectation that there will at least be a consent agenda at each meeting.
Right.
So that we can pay bills and sign contracts and hire people and so forth. You know, that's kind of, it's inside baseball, but it's important to those of us that try to keep the day-to-day wheels turning.
Right, absolutely. That'll all still happen, I believe. Council Lemon?
We could save a ton of money if we didn't pay the bills.
Short-term, maybe.
Yes. Um, and then along with that is that I have been pushing staff to get, to push as many things on the consent agenda as we possibly can. So if there's something that is not anticipated to be necessary to have a big discussion about, or there's not significant direction on where council believes this should go, that most of those items will be going on to the consent agenda. And with, everyone has very much the ability to pull anything off when they want to. So if you see anything on there that you want to pull off, definitely pull it off to have discussion and don't be afraid by any means to do that. It's not intended to be on there not to have discussion about it, but simply to keep efficient meetings going on and be able to have the bigger discussions that I believe a city council needs to have. Is everyone comfortable with that? Council Lemon?
Yeah.
You're still thinking, okay.
Oh, there was, there was one thing, Mayor, tonight, that I was gonna take off consent, but I called staff or actually emailed them back and forth, and the $20,000 we're paying to replace a box that was hit by a car or something. It's like, don't their insurance pay for that? Don't our insurance pay for that?
Do we know?
Apparently, no, we don't know who did it, and no, our insurance doesn't pay for it, so.
Who knew? You and I would be sending the same emails back and forth between staff. That's amazing.
Yeah, apparently, the insurance is way too expensive to carry on that, so.
Yeah, we're self-insuring for things like that. It's more cost-effective.
Alright, so do you have what you need from us, Mark?
Let me see if I got this straight. Okay. We're going to load up the first meeting with as much business as we can do. We will still have business conducted at the second meeting, which is a third Tuesday. And again, with the idea that the planning commission's going to be following that by a couple of days. But we will do then more strategic planning sorts of items. If you could provide us at the first meeting, items that you would like to see discussed two weeks following, I think that would be typically ample time for us to get background information together for you. We do have some items that we think need to be looked at. If nothing else, just the follow-up from the goal-setting session. I think that will be more than one meeting, just to get some ideas as far as action steps and plans and that sort of thing. I'm hearing economic development is one of the top priorities as a result of that, and we can certainly do that. Put that on the meeting. Just so that you are aware where things are going, the next four Tuesdays, congratulations, are scheduled for you. We do have the Legos 10, or 401 workshop next week. We'll probably have one other business item. This will be the item or the meeting that we'll be pursuing as far as, the first of these, as far as a goal, or excuse me, as far as a work setting. And then on the 24th, we do have a public hearing for one of the economic development proposals that will come in. That by itself should not take that long. Typically, those are not lengthy and involved. However, I think probably, as we're looking at this, you had expressed an interest to look at the city's garbage contract, and we do have a proposal from them to look at a different sort of recycling. What we will do is propose to have that discussion on the meeting of the 24th, because I think we will want to make people aware of what the proposed changes are and give them an opportunity to come in before we get too far into the process. Would that be acceptable?
Why would that not be on the normal meeting day?
Again, we could do it on a normal meeting day, but that means we have to wait for a full month. And again, I, I'm anticipating this will probably generate some discussion. That will mean that that meeting would be that much longer, but we could certainly do it then. But I would suggest that that would be May 1st.
I would rather hold it off until the regular meeting date, so that we have our, that's when we have things going on in this, this special meeting. I don't want to drag it out longer than we originally intended for scheduling the special meeting.
Okay.
That's my thought. What other folks?
Doesn't matter to me either way, I guess.
You're, you're speaking on the 24th?
I, I'm saying the 24th should be what we've got the, the meeting, what we scheduled the meeting for, for the application for Sandmar, and that's it. And keep to our regularly scheduled meetings as much as possible. That's just my thought to keep it where it's supposed to be.
Mr. Leek had his hand up before, I don't know.
Mayor, members of the council, and Mr. McNeil, I was just going to make a suggestion regarding the broader area of economic development. I would suggest that you might want to consider for one of those sessions, inviting the EDAC and perhaps inviting some of our experts or specialists from Springstead and Kennedy and Graven to talk with you about economic development, the tools that we use. I don't think we're going to see a lessening of requests for the city to do economic development, and I think that might be beneficial. I think for the EDAC, hearing some of that second time may be good as well. So, just a suggestion for one of the sessions.
Perfect. Alright, any others? Oh, Mr. Wyden?
One last comment. I think these workshops would be a great opportunity for groups like the EDAC or Park and Rec or different groups to get their goals from us and kind of feel where we're at. So specifically, throughout in the next few months, maybe we can catch a few of them in some of these meetings.
Absolutely. Yeah. Council Lemon?
Mayor, I think it would be beneficial to know, as a body, as a group, where we are at before we have the meetings with the other groups.
It's true.
Where, where we are at is in.
Where are we going as a group?
What kind of goals we want to leave them with?
Yep.
Okay.
We kind of have that. Isn't that what we just did? You're saying more specific?
Right, because there's really a lot to each one of them goals that has to really be worked through. And depending on how we work through that, that may alter other areas of what they're doing.
That's true.
Right. Okay, we will.
So am I, Mr. Mayor, am I hearing then for the meeting of the 17th, we would do economic development? That would be only you as the council and not to invite, as Mr. Leek suggested, EDAC and Springstead to come in at that meeting?
I think it would be valuable to have the EDAC there. I don't think we need to invite a lot of people. Because what I want to do mostly at the, the first economic development one is talk about process and make sure that staff gets clear direction from us and is able to ask questions as to what we want to get done and what priorities are and those kinds of things, so that everybody's on the same page. And I think EDAC there would be beneficial, just for additional ideas and, and breadth of discussion. Council Lemon?
Mayor, I think the first one on the 17th should just be the council and the staff discussing economic development. And then once we have our, our hands wrapped around what it is we want to do, the following economic development meeting, we would bring in the EDAC, Springsteads and Kennedy and Graven, and get all of us on the same page with the same information.
For what?
To try to achieve what it is we decided we want to achieve.
Okay. What's everybody else's thing?
Maybe we need a workshop to figure out what we're gonna do.
Let's have a workshop to make a workshop to make a workshop. Council Punt?
It seems like, being that it's gonna be our first try at this, that maybe keeping it small would be ideal, just the council and staff.
Okay.
Yeah, let's get our feet under us first. I agree.
Done. Alright. That significant direction, clear direction?
The date is the 17th.
We will see you in two weeks, following the regular council meeting, or as part of it. It'll just be the council and staff will be talking about economic development in general.
Correct. And the only thing from what you had recapped that I differed on was that at that workshop meeting is when we'll be discussing what the following meeting will be, and not at the first meeting of the month. So on the 17th, we'll discuss what the second meeting of May will be. Is that correct?
Okay, that's consensus. We'll do that.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. 11 F2.
Mayor, this is a request for regional transit capital that is before you tonight. Mr. Leek, I believe, has more information than do I on it.
Sure. Mayor and council members, Mayor Tabke, along with the mayors of Prior Lake, Maple Grove, and Plymouth, and board members from Minnesota Valley Transit Authority and Southwest Transit, received a letter dated March 23rd from Met Council Regional Administrator Pat Born, in which he asks that the respective. Pat Born, in which he asks that the respective cities and boards voice their needs and concerns about regional transit capital funding. There is about a $35 million request by the Metropolitan Council for regional transit capital bonding in the current legislative session, and they expressed that they've had some difficulty moving that forward. The memo on the table tonight, I think, probably lets you know that there have been issues between suburban providers like Shakopee and the others named in the letter in the Met Council, in terms of the funding that we've received after we've been at the legislature together. And I will just briefly outline them for purposes of those who may still be listening. We've had experience with the Met Council developing a capital projects list, but not following or modifying it as it relates to suburban transit providers. One current example is that we partner with Shak- with Prior Lake and the Blue Express. Prior Lake submitted a CMAC application, but it was in partnership with us for three coach buses to expand our transit service. In the current capital projects list, those are listed as 40-foot buses, which are significantly different for long-haul express service than coaches are. The Met Council, a little bit of history, several years ago, each year, the suburban providers would receive a check for their national travel database funds. Those are funds that essentially we earn based on a formula of number of miles traveled and number of passengers that we carry. And the last time we received one, which I think may have been about at least eight years ago, was about an $18,000 annual payment. In recent years, what's happened is that we have not only not received those NTD funds every year, but we've been told by Met Council staff that we only get NTD funds for capital purposes and when we specifically request them. So there are a number of funds that we've earned over the years, which exist somewhere, but certainly not in Shakopee's transit budget, and the same is true for the other suburban providers. The second thing that happens is that the Met Council provides us, when we request the funding, only our NTD monies, and other than bus purchases, no portion of the regional transit capital. Other providers like Southwest have specific examples that they've been concerned about. Problems with following through on previous funding commitments certainly has been a problem that we've had in the past. And frankly, last year especially, the Met Council led the charge to reduce suburban providers' operational funds. At one point in conference committee, their chief lobbyist came forward and said, we need, I believe the first number was $17 million, out of the fund balances of the suburban transit providers. That was eventually reduced to, if I recall, 3.6 million over the biennium. And our operating funds were held at 2011 funding levels. That would be all the suburban providers, as well as the fact that we have not shared in the growth in Mvest percentage. In other words, when we started on Mvest instead of property tax, everyone received their pro-rata share of about 21.5% of Mvest. That has ramped up in the region to 36%. But only the Met Council and Metro Transit receives their pro-rata share of 36%. We're still at 21.5%, except that, of course, we are limited to 2011 by the legislation that took last year. So, I've taken the liberty of putting together a draft letter. Because the call in Mr. Born's letter was to communicate with the legislature, the letter you have in front of you is proposed to be addressed to Senator Julianne Ortman, who is the chair of the Senate Tax Committee, which is dealing with these issues. And that letter expresses the issues that I've outlined in the report, and asks for some specific assurances from the Met Council, essentially says, our support is there because regional transit capital is important for all of the transit providers, but we really need some assurances that if we're getting behind it, you're going to do certain things. And those things are that they revise the RTC project list to show those coach buses for the CMAC grant that we were awarded, that the council commit to funding all of those projects with that revision, to coach buses noted, that the council annually provide, not only Shakopee, but the other suburban providers, with an accounting of the NTD funds that we've earned, so that we can execute a request to get those funds. And I specifically note that there were supposed to be some RTC funds in the Eagle Creek Transit Station. We funded that portion in another fashion. It's our belief that we should get those funds for use at Marshall Road. We believe the Met Council should commit to a restoration of suburban Mvest operating funds to at least pre-2011 legislative freeze levels. In the last couple of months, Mvest has been increasing, so we'd like to share in that increase in operating funds. And we also think the Met Council needs to support a future increase in our percentage of Mvest as regional transit providers. Just by way of background, Minnesota Valley Transit, as of yesterday, was not planning on responding, nor was Plymouth or Maple Grove. Southwest Transit Boards had discussed this last Thursday. They had drafted a letter with similar concerns, but different specific issues that they had encountered. Prior Lake last evening had a very similar memo and letter in front of them. They did vote to have their mayor sign it and send it, and I believe that signing was going to take place this evening. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I should say that this issue was discussed quite extensively, both over email with the suburban transit providers and at the legislative committee meeting that was held yesterday. Sort of an unusual circumstance in that the letter from Patrick Born did not come to us, so in some cases, staff wasn't in a position to respond to it because they didn't get it. Prior Lake had just gotten the letter last Wednesday evening, because it had gone to the mayor and not found its way down to staff for response, so. That, if you have questions.
Councilor Lehman?
That's the true sense of the meaning of an opt-out, Mr. Leake. Two issues that I have with this. The first is, and I don't think they're really addressed, one is if the transit funding, if the revenue that they receive is reduced, for whatever reason, we're still asking them to spend the same amount, which means they have to make up that revenue somehow.
Are we talking about the transit capital or the operating funds, Counselor Lehman?
Pick one, either one of them.
Well, if the regional transit capital bonding authority is not given, then there are a number of projects on the regional list, including the CMAC buses that I referred to for the Blue Express. That wouldn't happen.
But they pay their bonds off revenue, and if the revenue is way down, they're gonna-
Well, the bonds are paid off revenues from the regional transit taxing district-
Right.
-which in Scott County consists of Prior Lake Savage and Shakopee only.
But if their revenue is reduced, and, you know, if our revenue was really reduced, we, as a body, would consider how much we're gonna bond, which they're doing the same thing. So what we're really asking them to do is, even if their revenue is reduced, still bond for the whole amount and figure out where they're gonna get the revenue from. That's my first issue, because I'm concerned that we're asking the taxpayers to subsidize transit more in that case.
Who are you saying is "they"?
Well...
Are you saying "they" as the state, or "they" as Met Council?
The Met Council and their transportation department.
But this is not asking about council, this is the state.
We're asking the state legislators to pass law that forces this body to do things.
Actually, that's not the case.
Okay.
Met Council makes a request each session for authorization to issue bonds. Historically, they have not issued bonds equaling the total amount of the authorization. Once they get the authorization, it is in their discretion how much they're going to issue. And the reason that they have typically asked for something in the range of 30 to 35 million in authorization is because they use that authorization to smooth out the peaks and valleys of projects in the regional transit system.
Okay. Then my second point in concern was, over the years, we've discussed how they tend to take a chunk of money and use it in certain areas.
Could you stop saying "they"? Explain who you're talking about?
The Met Council and their transit folks take the funding and put it in certain areas consistently, and lower funding to the opt-outs, which Shakopee is. Somewhere in here, it needs to say that we would like to see the funding mechanism equitable across-
Counselor Lehman, Mayor, and members of the council, I think that's what the last bullet point in the letter does say. It says the Met Council should support a future increase in our percentage share of Mvest to reflect the increases that were put in place with the change to Mvest funding from the property tax. Essentially, what we're saying there is that they need to support getting us on our percentage of that 36%, not 21.5%, essentially restoring us to a similar position that they occupy in Mvest funding. So I think it does that. In addition, the bullet point before that says, you need to support restoring our operating funds to at least what was in place before the freeze in 2011.
So not only are we asking for the level to increase to where it was before the freeze, but we're also asking for our percentage to be increased, and I'm curious to where this money's coming from.
The money comes from the Minnesota Vehicle Sales Tax, sale of vehicles.
And if that revenue is low, which it has been...
Has been, although it's been increasing the last couple of months.
Mm-hmm. But historically, it's pretty low.
Yeah, but remember that 36% is whatever revenues are realized. So if the amount of revenue that is collected by the state is reduced, the amount of revenue any of us, Metro Transit, Shakopee, Prior Lake, Southwest Metro, or Minnesota Valley, gets would be reduced. If those revenues increase, then the amount of revenues all of us get would be increased.
Okay. So we're not asking for them to subsidize...
No, we're asking them to do what was contemplated when the legislature said we're gonna switch from the property tax to Minnesota Vehicle Sales Tax as a mechanism for funding transit. That 21.5% was roughly what the transit providers in the region were getting in property tax dollars in 2004, when that change was made. And it was contemplated that it would increase in percentage, but the Met Council has interpreted that to mean, essentially, it only increased for them. Now, I know from my conversation with a number of legislators, that they thought that meant the percentage on which that was calculated, the operating revenues were calculated, was going to increase for all of the regional transit providers. We, along with the other folks named in Mr. Born's letters, are regional transit providers. Just like Met Transit, we're not as big, obviously, but we're regional transit providers. We provide replacement service because years ago, they weren't providing meaningful service to Shakopee and the other communities. So, we're not asking the legislature to increase the amount of operational funding, or the Met Council to support an increase in the amount of operational funding, just what we think is inequitable sharing based on the percentage that we were all supposed to be at. Now, I will acknowledge for you that a concern at the Met Council is the legislature has charged them, in the past at least, with doing a number of rail projects. And they don't have a way of saying, we're not going to do them, so it is my belief that they try to marshal the operating funds that they can to make sure that they can pay for those operations as well. Remember, they've got the Hiawatha Line, Central Corridor is nearing completion, and they want to get Southwest launched. And there are a number of other Bus Rapid Transit projects that they'd like to do within the region. So, we've had conversations that took place with Met Council staff over about four years, in which they finally acknowledged that, yeah, if rail projects cost more and the legislature doesn't provide all the operating funding that they committed, they're gonna have to use whatever funding mechanisms they have. It's part of the reason for wanting to grab part of the suburban providers' transit fund balances.
So what was the nature of the other cities not sending this letter?
The other cities and MVTA, as I understand it from yesterday's discussion, had not had an opportunity to discuss it, had some concerns, and frankly, were concerned, I think, about getting in the middle of the issue. And there are some legislators who feel very strongly about the Met Council and how it operates transit. And this letter, I think some of them thought was asking them to, first of all, overlook some of the problems they'd had with funding from Met Council before, without assurances that they weren't gonna have them again, and then be in a position in opposition to their key legislators. Not strategically a good thing to do, I suspect. As I said, Southwest did a similar letter. It asked for assurances on a number of issues in writing, I think before they would throw their full support behind regional transit. Their letter and Prior Lakes, as well as this one, tried to say, look, we recognize the importance of regional transit, we just need you to play fair with us, and tell us upfront that you're going to do that, so we can hold you to it after the legislative session.
All right. Any other questions from council? Is it something we want to take action on this evening? Counselor Whiting?
Well, I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the letter to Senator Ortman for support for bonding, or bonding of the RTC.
Seconded by Counselor Clay. Discussion, Councilor Lehman?
Can I get a overview from our transit liaison? That would be you, Pam. What's your thoughts?
I agree with sending the letter. I think that what's listed in here has been pretty consistently addressed over the past two years that I've had knowledge and been involved in transit. I think Michael did a good job breaking down these last five bullet points on the letter, and essentially what they're asking for. And it's actually quite consistent with letters that we've sent previously as well. We continue to ask for the same things, I believe.
Very good. Any other discussion?
Just one last comment. If we've consistently asked for this, why are we, why do we continue to ask? Maybe we need a bigger bat or something.
Counselor Lehman, members of the council, part of the reason why the letter is structured the way it is, especially in terms of who it's going to, is to let the chair of the Senate Tax Committee know directly about those concerns. I think part of the issue may have been that we've made those requests of the Met Council for years, and they've not been acted on. So perhaps if we bring it to the attention of some more powerful members of the legislature who are concerned about reforms in metropolitan governance, it might have an effect. That's the thought, anyway.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember reports. We'll start on this side. Counselor Punt?
I do not have an update tonight.
Counselor Lehman?
Attended Derby Day's board meeting. Discussion about the electrical needs- I attended Derby Days Board Meeting. Discussion about the electrical needs that they have at the park, and not a whole lot can be done about some of the issues, but we're gonna take a look at it and see what, if anything, can be done. I have to give out the sales pitch about the funding that's needed and the time constraint to put this all together for the citizens and the community to enjoy the events. Eleven thousand dollars on fireworks for the last couple of years. With the inflation, you get less with the same amount of money, so they'd like to raise it to maybe fifteen thousand dollars. But that takes more donations, so if you wanna help a good cause, contact Derby Days, I think it's ShakopeeDerbyDays.com is the website. They are looking for sponsors, volunteers, and donations, so they've got some pretty good acts lined up. But it is kind of a logistical tap dance, so to speak, putting it all together. I don't think people realize that, but there is a lot to organizing it, and Mr. Whiting probably can vouch for that. He's involved in that in the past. Couple of small changes, nothing major. If the weather is good this year, it's gonna be a really good event. I got some really good entertainment lined up, so that's all I have for tonight.
Very good. Counselor Clay?
Utilities Commission, they're working on some repair and maintenance projects to a couple of wells, taking advantage of the nice weather and getting a head start on that. The County Route sixty-nine project, the water main bids are in, and they passed a resolution to go ahead and proceed with that County sixty-nine project, water main portion of it. They should be starting work on that any day now. The other thing would be the Special Lighting District. It was a discussion yesterday. We're going to have the same type of LED lighting and the same type of poles that were used. On the one-on-one project, we'll continue from Fuller Street over to where our malting is, or the substation on the north side there. Then there'll be some other types of poles as we go farther south on sixty-nine. But that's all looking like it's coming along nicely and as planned.
Perfect. Counselor Whiting?
Well, there was no school board this week. I did meet on the twenty-first with the chamber board. They're beginning, their public policy group is beginning to gather input on the sign ordinance, and that'll be being worked on in two thousand thirteen here. So, it'll take a lot of time to bring something forward to us, but we'll have a lot of time to gather the right input and conversations. On the twenty-ninth, I attended a class, Basics in Planning and Zoning. I also went to the scale group that same night and participated in their Legos one, two, and three course, which was interesting. Ask me anything now, before I forget. That's all. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Week before last, I went to Mayor's Conference in downtown St. Paul, talked about engaging youth in activities outside of School Day stuff, so it was actually really good, and learned a lot there, so that was good. And then, that same week, we also had the Diversity Summit, which I hope everybody heard, went really well. I was hoping and talking about getting twenty to thirty people here, and we privately planned for seventy-five at the very most, and we had a hundred and forty people come. It was packed, and Mark and staff and everybody did a great job of handling everybody who was here. It was great. We had a lot of wonderful discussion, and got a lot of people activated and engaged and started to move. We've got a task force starting up next week to take the ideas and things that came out of the Diversity Summit and figure out what to do with them, and how to pay for things, and what happens moving forward, and just start making those, having that discussion as to what happens. So, it was really good, and I wanna thank everybody who came. It was great. Any other business we could discuss? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, April tenth, at seven PM.
So moved. Second.
Are we okay?
Then I will second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We are adjourned at eight-twenty-nine, just like Counselor Clay said, an hour and twenty-nine minutes.